So with that, I will call the meeting to order. Would you please rise and join us in saluting the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could please remain standing, I will pass on to member Scott Carrara, who has a passing of a town employee.
It is sad to report the loss of another piece of Stoughton's puzzle of history. Susan Walsh, 72 years old, passed away peacefully. She was a Stoughton High grad in 1967. She was a patrol officer with the Stoughton Police Department for 28 years. She was the first woman detective to be appointed and was awarded many commendations for being a detective. She was also a former town meeting rep for many years. She had a great sense of humor that only a few were able to be granted the pleasure. She could also do many voices of people in the world and the town. The one thing I remember is I was present when she was doing her best Bob Brenner, and it was at the BNI Getty Station in Stoughton. And she did it so well that Bob was standing behind her and he thanked her. So you had to know Susan. She was pretty funny at times. To look at her, you wouldn't think so. She sort of scared me, too. So I want to say to Cynthia, David, Patrick, John's gone, Priscilla, and all the nieces and nephews, that the board up here extends to all of you our deepest sympathies for the loss of Susan. She was a great, great person. So could we have a moment of silence and let Susan rest in peace? Thank you.
Okay, we'll get right into, and we will be making this because we do have a lengthy evening, I believe, as we move along. So under citizens comments, is there anyone from citizens comments would like to be brought up? Mr. Lurie?
Hi, David Lurie from Precinct 6, 18 Robinett Road. I just wanted to start by saying congratulations to the new members of the board. And this is my first time being live to be able to say that. But something interesting is coming up is the anniversary of something that happened in the 1980-1981 timeframe. It was Barbara Anderson, during a time when Massachusetts was being classified as Taxachusetts, she came up with a terrific idea, which was to pass something called Proposition Two and a Half. So we're coming up on about 40 years of history, and many towns have used that Two and a Half to not only control how much taxes happen to the residents, but some of them actually understand that you don't actually have to tax people up to the full amount of Two and a Half. Some towns, they have a habit of actually doing overrides and they actually go above it. Stoughton is in the camp of never saying lower, never saying higher. We kind of stay the same. We're always using up all the levy that Prop Two and a Half allows. I studied it over 20 years. My guess is that it goes back at least 40, in which we never say no to the maximum amount that you can tax the town. This year is also interesting in that we've got some projects coming up that will require a revenue source. So the board right now, in the month of August, has an opportunity to lower the levy in an amount equal to the needs for a new fire station. The town doesn't need more revenue. We've got more than enough. Matter of fact, we saw a spike of an extra million being added to the turnbacks that the departments can't even spend fast enough. The money's coming in so well, we can't even spend all the money that's coming in. So what I'm requesting is that the board look at the month of August as the perfect time to set aside money in the levy, to put aside for an avoidance of another debt exclusion, just like we built this beautiful high school, and we needed a debt exclusion to do it. We don't have to do debt exclusion upon debt exclusion upon debt exclusion. We can use the levy to get control of all this excess money that's available in the budget to fund the fire station. Get a reasonable cost on a fire station, we could easily make it possible within the budget if you take action in August. No action is equal to a forced vote next year for a townwide vote to do a debt exclusion for a fire station. This is the month in which you could actually carve out that money. The other benefit of having all this money that, because we don't have a revenue problem, is that it gives you leverage. So every time a business comes into town, you don't have a gun held to your head like, oh, we might lose new sources of revenue. You have leverage. You can say no to a bad deal. So don't be afraid to say, hey, why would we make an exception for this business when all the other businesses have to pay the full amount? So we don't have to give away TIFs. We don't have to get involved with making certain exceptions. We have a lot of leverage. We're in a strong position. You should be using that when you get into situations where businesses want to take advantage of their situation. That's all I have to say, but I hope you make good decisions with our revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lurie. Hi, Mr. Fay. And citizens comments are for business that is not scheduled on this agenda, or it's something that's supposed to be intended to anything that needs the board's immediate attention that wasn't on the agenda. So I want to just make sure that's clear. Thank you.
Does that include the consent agenda, sir?
No, if you want to speak on that, that won't be allowed to be spoken on. It's not a public hearing. We're going to take up the consent agenda, and I know what you're here for. I think you'll be happy. But that's not open for a discussion.
During citizens comments, is it?
If it's not something on the agenda. Citizens comments, if you want to make a quick comment, I know what you're going to make, but again, we're trying to keep things where the meeting goes on and on and on, and everything is informed. That is not a public hearing. That's why it's on the consent agenda. And if the board has questions, they will ask questions. But again, that's not the purpose of citizens comments.
Okay. If I could, just real quick, I'd like to say that we are here to support the House of Brews and the Beer Garden that they're looking to do at the train station. Actually, it'll be on Steve Kelly's property. We missed a wonderful community event on July 3rd. This would be a great addition.
So that's why we said that it's not, you know, this is on the consent agenda. It will be dealt with. Okay? So it's not a public hearing. Okay? All right, so with that, Leo, like I said, you'll be happy with the vote, I can tell you that. All right. Anything else on citizens comments? Hearing none. We'll move to select board comments, and I will start from my right, Mr. Kaby.
I have no comments, thank you.
Mr. Carrara?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to just give you a quick report on the Stoughton Housing Trust Committee. I sat with them on last Thursday, and they brought me up to speed as much as I could take in that night. And they have, they've been working real hard at what they've done. They already got the trust laid out. They got the article. They're putting together if we have a special town meeting, and I want to talk something about that later. After this, I'll ask a question. But they got the declaration of the trust set up. They're working on bringing the special act, which will allow it to be enacted at the legislature, at the State House. That'll be coming forward. And we went through a lot of things. They had to change some wording, straighten some stuff out that Town Council had missed and didn't strike out. They added a couple of things, and so they're turning that over there for the final go-through. And they also would like to get set on an agenda later on so that they could put a proper proposal together for the whole board to understand where they are, what's being done, and possibly what it's going to take to finish this out. And that's a pretty quick report on my first meeting and what they extended to me. One other thing I want to ask through you, that we always talk about having a special town meeting. These town meetings aren't becoming special by any strength of the word "special." Special means, and when I was on the board before, special was unforeseen activities. If we lost a fire truck, a roof, something drastic, or unfinished business at the annual was carried over. If we're going to just have a town meeting every fall, let's call it what it's going to be called. It should be called a Fall Town Meeting, and then that's it. Because it doesn't meet the criteria, the stuff we bring forward for a special town meeting. And I'm not, I can tell you that I won't vote for things that aren't a problem, that we can't solve during the regular year to just, oh, the special's coming, we can load it on. You either have it ready at the ATM, or something drastic's going to happen. That's what a special is for. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Roberts?
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Mr. Cheeto?
Nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Cheeto. Okay, and I guess, does that, I was going to bring that up, but I'm going to pass as well. Okay, with that, Madam Town Manager.
You'll hear enough from me in a minute.
Okay, so with that, been a long time coming. And I would just like the opportunity, Madam Town Manager, before you begin, to thank your staff, the folks at Palmeroy Associates, who are down in the front row here, on the job that you've done. You were tasked by this board to come back with some ideas, including funding mechanisms. I had the opportunity to sit in briefly for your first meeting and just answered some questions as to, so to give everybody the, where this board was coming from, and basically to tell you folks all, do your job. I saw some eyes roll back into their head. I know some department heads that were like, how are we going to pull this off? But what, I got a very brief briefing today. I just can't wait to hear it. So thank you to all your staff, everybody that's here. You know who you are, and I didn't, I wouldn't want to, because with my memory at this point, if I go to try to remember everyone, I'm going to miss somebody, and I don't want to do that. But I know you all. Thank you all for what you've done on behalf of the board, and when you acted for the board, you act for the town of Stoughton, everybody in it. Thank you. Madam Town Manager.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you very much, Chairman McChrisky. I'd like to thank the Select Board for giving us the opportunity as a staff to come up with a plan to present. And so tonight, we are here to officially present to the board for consideration a Stoughton Fire Station proposal. I could not be more excited. I just want to briefly, you mentioned the team that you had sat in and met some of our team. I just quickly want to mention Mark Tisdale, who's unable to be here tonight, who's the Executive Director of Development Services. Craig Horstfall, who is here this evening. Craig is our Assistant Town Engineer. Fran Brutini is our Procurement Officer. She is here. Sue Herman is our Financial Analyst and Internal Auditor. Sue will be working on the financing models. Just as an aside, tonight, we'll not go into the depths of financing because what we want, or what we're requesting from the board before we go that direction, is a sense that you're comfortable with where we're going before we start trying to figure out how much something is going to cost until we know that you actually like what we're doing. But Sue is already starting to run some preliminary numbers, and we are hoping for the August 17th meeting, if the board supports the concept tonight, to then be able to provide some clear funding discussion. Paul Jafun, who's our Associate Superintendent of Public Works, and of course, Chief Carroll and Assistant Chief May Comber. Our outside team, you'll hear from them tonight, the owners' project manager, Palmeroy and Associates, and our architects, our door and wood ear. And we thank them. They've been with us now for a little while, and they've been great partners in this. So our charge, when the board opted to put this into the staff's hand, our charge was to develop a plan to provide state-of-the-art fire services with optimal response times, comfortable quarters, and the ability to sustain at least 50 years of growth and development in Stoughton. And this is really important. We want to be certain that what we do 10 or 15 years from now, people aren't going to scratch their heads and say, what were they thinking? Or, you know, why didn't they consider this? Or why did they take, you know, look forward and know this was coming? We want to have the foresight that this is not something that 10 or 15, 20 years from now, we have to revisit. If we're going to invest taxpayer money into something, it needs to be worth every penny that we ask for. And so we're very committed to the fact that this project that we're going to present tonight will allow for the long-range growth of the town. We say 50 years, but realistically, we know it's more, it's going to probably be 75 or 100 years if we do it. So we try to take all of that. We also took into consideration already established programming needs. So for the past year or so, year and a half, there has been a lot of discussion on exactly what type of programming needs to go into a fire department. And everything in here tonight, everything that had been developed through that programming, though the plan is very different from what some people originally were looking at, conceptually, all of the program that had been looked at is here, and in some ways, even more. So I'm very excited about that. And also, to ensure that the most affordable options are there while providing top-tier services. We had a lot of chat about cost. Some numbers got bantered about that were a little staggering, frankly, and for taxpayers, and we're all taxpayers wherever we live, that those sometimes numbers back us off a little bit. But we know that we need to provide top-tier services. And when we talk about what matters in a community, primarily, a lot of it is public safety and taxpayer dollars and how they're used. And what we strove for as a team on this was to achieve those goals of providing the best we could for public safety at the most reasonable cost to the taxpayer. Biggest bang for the buck. So the major needs to make this work, we needed a site with optimal response time when we consider it in conjunction with Station 2. So the ideal location would allow for responding firehouses to sit somewhat on opposite sides of town. Ideally, we have one station that sits off to the west, and we have Freeman Street, which sits very central, and we have a gap on the eastern side. So as everybody knew logically, the location we would most likely want to look at would be on the eastern side that would complement Station 2. And it would allow for responses to be swift. And one of the discussions, and Chief Carroll brought this up, was that we also, when we look at response times, also want to consider that we're not driving through neighborhoods if we don't have to. While the response time at 25 miles an hour might calculate a certain way, that's all well and good, but it doesn't calculate for the kid on the bicycle. It doesn't calculate for the skateboard. It doesn't calculate for people walking their dogs. So when we started to think about these sites, we looked at the very actual response times, and then took into consideration what type of streets our fire apparatus would be going through before they got to the vast majority of places that they would go. We also, of course, need larger bays, broad-sized bays to accommodate newer equipment and better mechanical work. Reasonable dormitories to allow for growth in numbers, and also to account for the increase in the number of female firefighters. Stoughton has done a tremendous job integrating our fire department with women, and that's great, and really has been on the forefront. But the reality is, if you go through Freeman Street, our firefighters, male and female, share shower facilities, for example, don't have separate dormitory space. It's just not conducive to a healthy environment in the workplace, realistically. And it's not frankly fair to anybody. And so we need to take into account that we want to continue with that growth. We have tremendous quality female firefighters, and we continue to plan on hiring the best in the profession, and quite often, and as we've seen in Stoughton, we have had women join us. Facility designed to recognize the changing and challenges in firefighting, things like hazmat, decontamination. Those have become, for instance, areas that a lot of all firehouses didn't consider, but now are taken into consideration. And the ability, and this is an important one, to move an ambulance back to Station 2, which those of you, in fact, three of the members of this board, I believe, have their names on Station 2. And the original plan of that was to have an ambulance service on that side of town. And that was really an important factor for that building. And because of the way headquarters ended up in there, we ended up with public traffic in and out, it really ended up logistically not conducive to that, though the plan was good. And so it was a good plan to begin with. Why not look at how we can get back to that plan? And so that's what we took into account as well. Finding a site. So we had initially, the initial program design for all of the things that we would want in a fire station would have required approximately three to four acres with public-facing frontage to account for headquarters activities and associated parking that provided optimal response. So we were looking at three to four acres, and we need to ensure that it was an optimal response time in conjunction to Station 2. So alternatives, because we knew that we were having trouble finding that site. We went out to bid. We came back with one bid. That bid got withdrawn. Poor Fran has been writing bid documents left and right for fire stations. And so we really didn't have anywhere that we could cite, a three to four acre, a large firehouse that would have all of these things that we feel we need if we're going to build this building to make it last the years it needs to and really contain the functional growth. So we decided we needed to think outside of the box, and I have to tell you, everything we present tonight was just, this has been one of the best teams I have ever worked on in like 20 years in government. The ideas just generated. One person would throw something out, kind of like it was almost off the wall, but nobody ever discounted any idea because all of a sudden, the idea that seemed a little bit out there got everybody thinking in the room. And what you're going to see tonight is really the generation of probably one of the best team dynamics I've had the pleasure of working in. And I can't say enough about what a pleasure it is to work with my team, because they make it frankly easy for me when it goes like this. So what we, we looked at our needs, a fire response plan that covers Stoughton with minimal response times without increasing staffing, because every added firefighter is an added pension, added health care, there are a lot of costs. And our staffing isn't our problem. Our numbers of firefighters is not our issue. The headquarters and public access facility. So right now, for instance, fire prevention is at headquarters. There is a lot of public activity at fire prevention. We have a lot of people in and out. And we wanted something that would have easy accessibility, easy parking, and we wanted it ideally near public services, all other municipal public services, i.e. a campus environment. It's very nice for the public to one-stop shop. Somebody comes in for permitting, they go to the fire prevention, they have police, they have Executive Director of Development Services office, building. And we also wanted to look at facilities for training, storage areas, and emergency operations. We don't have one central emergency operation center in town right now. So if we have a critical incident, we might all go to the community room at the police station, but that's not really equipped for a true emergency operation center where, you know, we have our fire equipment and radios and everything we need in that room. It's just basically a community room. And then consideration for general public health and accessibility. We have public health, obviously, is a growing concern right now, or has become to the forefront, the concept of public health. And I say that, we usually use the term VNA. Janice is here, in fact, and Janice has really run our public health operation through COVID. So we want to also consider what we've learned from a pandemic, of what we don't have for services and resources and what we could use. And frankly, a place where we can gather public for different types of health needs or health concerns was something we were lacking. Now, nothing dictated that all of this had to be in any one building. We started looking at it as if it all had to be in one building. But that one building, we couldn't find a place to put it, frankly. And not one that worked for response times optimally. We had some options, but when we looked at those options, they did not give us the optimal response time. So, the plan. A new Station 1, but a much reduced size station, truly a firehouse, just what it is, a firehouse. Necessary equipment base for all responsible vehicles for that side of town. Advanced dormitory facilities that are comfortable and inviting. When we were recruiting firefighters to Stoughton, we want dormitory facilities that are comfortable, welcoming, safe, account for growth and diversity of gender that we need to consider. Hazmat and decontamination, and some general vehicle maintenance. Our maintenance bays right now are problematic. So how do we do this? Well, we re-advertised for sites that could accommodate this, and it was a much smaller site that we needed. We can do this on two acres. Because we don't have a public component in there, and we don't have a training center, we were able to reduce the need for parking spaces, you know, by what might have been 25 or 30 parking spaces. That's a lot of land. We also didn't need as big of a footprint on the building. The result of the advertisement right now, the bids came in last, I guess it's Friday they were open, so they're still under review. Three bids came in. Two of the three are both bids that we can work with. Both would serve very well. The price range between them, I think Fran, is about $200,000 or $300,000 difference, but then right now, the bid review team is considering price in addition to just a couple of other factors. I'm going to work with the fire chief. So right now, I wanted to present a particular property tonight, if one of them had risen up, but it's still in discussion, and I don't want to rush that. Both properties are viable options. Both are under review for compliance with bid specifications and requirements. What I will tell you tonight is, by August 17th meeting, when we're talking about financing, we will be able to give you a specific site. But what you will see tonight is the plans on both, the station footprint generally on both sites, so that you can see how it works. I am not concerned at all that we will not be able to use one of these two sites. I'm thrilled that we have options to look at, and so we effectively know we have a site. I just don't know which one of the two that the review team will recommend to me. And maybe even by the end of the week, I may have that answer. Secondly, for the plan, Station 2. We're going to take the headquarters out of Station 2 because we want to put the ambulance back there. There is no ambulance. All of our ambulance operations run out of Freeman Street right now. So it's in the middle of town, which is sort of okay, but the whole goal is to have better response time across town. And so if we can put back to the original plan of the ambulance at Station 2, we can do that with a very minimal cost, literally partition walls and a lot of the work that can be done in-house to increase the dormitory space required to put that ambulance back there. And again, this is different from where people had talked before about adding an ambulance, a third station, all of those things, which would have required, I believe, 10 to 11 firefighters if we added, 12 firefighters if we added an ambulance. This doesn't add, but it allows for that ambulance response to be spread across the town more efficiently. And then here's sort of the, what do we do with the rest of it that we didn't put in either of the buildings? And here's the answer to that. Establishing a municipal fire, emergency operations, and public health headquarters. So it'll be a fire, emergency operation, and public health headquarters that would serve the public, accommodate associated foot traffic, while offering a training center, an emergency operation center, and a community area for public health. That would allow, for example, for COVID testing, vaccines, a distribution center. Even if you have a hurricane and you need to distribute water, and, you know, we could set up pods outdoors, but if we need a central distribution center for food or bottled water, it would be something that we would be able to serve in some capacity. This would require a central location, easy access, good parking, and a proximal location to other town departments. Freeman Street. We own it. We have it. We have the building to do this. We know we can't run a fire operations out of Freeman Street. We know we can't run a fire operations out of Freeman Street. The work to turn that into what we would have needed for a fire station would have been exorbitant. Number one, it's not on the optimal side of town, it's still in the center, we haven't spread the resources out. Number two, for it to accommodate the size and equipment, the type of apron we would need, the parking we would need to keep a headquarters there in conjunction with a firehouse, we would have had to afford, I believe, eight or nine properties. We don't know that everybody would sell, and people know that when we need a property, the prices can go up dramatically. It was not optimal. However, that doesn't mean that the building doesn't still have a purpose for us. It doesn't have to run fire operations, it can house a whole host of municipal functions. So, this establishes a bit of a campus feel where the public can one-stop shop with licensing projects, development issues. Part of why I like this is it brings foot traffic downtown, and we want walkable village feels in our towns. That's how New England towns really thrive. So, you, as you all know, we have the hole-in-the-ground progress moving, and it is, there were actually people inside there the other day. That's going to develop, and we want more foot traffic around that. We want to look at having a building that has a training center where maybe the Fire Chiefs Association, the Norfolk County Chiefs Association, might meet there on a given date, and we bring them into our downtown. We have small trainings, the police chief may host her Chiefs Association meeting. That might be a nice place for her to host that. This is truly a municipal room, it serves for fire training, but it has a far greater purpose, it's now a municipal, a larger municipal function. But it is where primarily fire headquarters are housed, and fire prevention, which is big, this huge amount of traffic for fire prevention. This also allows for fire prevention to happen, for the public to come into fire prevention without having to dodge trucks going out on calls as they do right now, and without firefighters having to dodge pulling trucks out with the public coming in to do business. Encourages downtown foot traffic. If free space, it's space at Station Two for the ambulance is originally planned with better town response coverage. It allows for all response needs with no increase in staffing, as those headquarters would be day staff people anyway. Those would be all of our day staff at headquarters. And it is a point that people say, well, shouldn't the head, shouldn't the command staff be with the firefighters? The reality is they're only with one group of the firefighters anyway because they're only at one of the two stations. So, it's not that every firehouse has headquarters in it. Having a central one actually makes them better located to access both stations. Avoiding the public driving in and out of areas with apparatus. Incorporating public health facilities more conducive to mass health issues. And we can't forget this part, to restore a historic building downtown with an effort to duplicate the original facade, and the architects will talk more about this, but our goal is to duplicate that beautiful, original look of that building and maintain the feel of that. Let's talk a little bit about the cost because this is important. Preliminary cost with plans for an all-inclusive fire station originally with the program design that we had was approximately $30 million, and that was back in March before we saw, and I was just talking to Taylor about this, before we saw some of the major spikes in construction cost. Since that time, the cost of new construction is skyrocketing, materials is skyrocketing, that $30 million likely would be a bit higher. Approximate cost for the current plan, and again, we're not going to talk too much about financing tonight, but I think it's important to know that what I'm proposing here, what our team is proposing, is about a 30%, potentially a 30% to 33% reduction in cost for everything, including land acquisition. So, the purchase of land right now, based on the two bids that we have, would range from 1.15 or so to 1.5. Fran, is that about where we're at? A little more maybe, maybe 1.6. Refurbishing of Station Two to make the dormitory space and remove the headquarters would be about $50,000 to $100,000. The restoration of Station One, $3 to $5 million. We also may get some historic grants and be able to look at some options there, and the new fire station would be about $15 to $18 million for a firehouse. Total approximate cost, anywhere between $18 and $24 million. So, we're anywhere from probably, depending on 30 on the low end on the other, we may be saving anywhere from maybe $8 to $12 million from what we would have to look at. Likely, if we say we go on the high end of this at 24 and the low end of the 30, we're still about $6 million ahead and more operational than we would have been, more optimal. Potential funding sources, by the way, not all of this may come from taxpayers. In Stoughton, I guess it all comes from taxpayers effectively, but from Stoughton tax dollars, let's say. The ARPA money, so Sue Herman's been working diligently to determine what will qualify for recovery money. There is money coming through Norfolk County, Bill Rowe is working on calculations for lost revenue that we have to use to figure out how much of that money we can use. It may be up to $3 million or a little more that may be able to be used toward this project. We may ask CPC for some consideration for the facade work on Station One. That's the maintenance of the historic building, those beautiful old doors. If we can replicate that, not all of the work would probably be CPC-related, but portions of it certainly could be something we could ask for, it might be $300,000, $400,000 of facade work, for example, that we might request. There are historic grants out there, and we don't know what else might be coming with ARPA money, so, and I will say this, the fire station itself would qualify, but even more, what really helps the spirit of what that money's supposed to be used for is the incorporation of the public health component, having a COVID testing site available, having a place where our own first responders can get vaccinated. I also think when we talk about the situation with the pandemic, having our fire administration separate even from the firehouses, we, what we found is with COVID, separation and not co-mixing whole teams was a big thing, that's what kept our town hall operational. We tried to keep everybody sort of in pods, if you will, separately. This allows for fire administration not necessarily to be exposed to their frontline team who may or may not be more at risk. And so, again, we just keep that a little bit separate, and right now, I mean, I never thought I'd be thinking about that as a possible, you know, as a possible reason to support something, but it has become that. So, overall benefits, a new state-of-the-art, reasonably-priced fire station located in a prime response area. The optimization of Station Two, and I think that's important, this goes back to, you know, the town put a building up in a location that allowed for us eventually to put a second building on the other end of town. So, conceptually, the location works very well for Station Two, and as the chief pointed out to me today, this really does actually make Stations Two site even better. It actually takes advantage and truly makes that even a better site now, Station Two. Very easy for us to incorporate better dormitory facilities at minimal cost on that. A centralized headquarters, emergency operations center, public health quarters downtown with public accessibility. I like this from a management standpoint as well. We have a crisis, I've got the police department across one street, we've got fire headquarters across the other, we have a central gathering place that we can all walk to and meet if we have to, and it really is a good feel for smooth operations. I've been in emergency operation crises, in a massive flood situation where we literally could not get around the community, it was taking an hour to get a half a mile. And literally, I walked out the back door of a city hall across a parking lot to a fire headquarters where my emergency operations center was, and it was probably one of the most efficient setups, and you hope you never need it, but ultimately, at some point, we do, it happens. And so, logistically, it works. Reduction of cost, up to maybe 33%. I know I'm probably a little hopeful on that, they're cringing over there because I keep telling them, the low end, the low end, the low end. But definitely a significant saving in the several millions of dollars savings with this proposal. The reuse of a historic building that is clearly a part of Stoughton's history and fiber. I know some people say maybe we should sell it and, you know, make it an economic development or a retail, whatever. The reality is that it wouldn't sell for a huge amount of money to make it worth what I'm going to lose operationally by expanding and repurposing it. And then, we would lose a lot of control over what went in it. If we put restrictions on a deed when we sold that, that it had to maintain some historic or the facade, or we would, it would be worth nothing basically on sale. So, it doesn't command enough to justify that. Creation of a cultural and historic space within Freeman Street. So, one of the things that we're considering in that building, this town does have a passion for its fire history, for all of its history frankly. We have the fire truck, for example, that's very popular in town meeting voted to support the restoration of that truck. We may be able to actually house that truck and fire memorabilia, fire history, you know, old photographs, we will work with the historic district to try to gather some of those things. I'd like to partner with them. And have a little section of that, because when the public comes in, if we use it as a training center and we bring fire chiefs in, or we bring the public in for meetings, it would be beautiful to have some of Stoughton's culture and history right there. Many of you know, I think of downtown as the future of downtown, as an arts and cultural center. It would be great if our own municipal building led the charge on that. Utilization, again, of a building that if we sold would result in limited income and loss of control over downtown use and likely demolition of part of the landscape of downtown. And I will tell you, a lot of New England towns have put new fire stations in, and they go right back, they do put them right back in their downtown areas. Fire stations, if you look around New England towns, really are part of the culture of downtown, and we will maintain that facade look of a fire station even though it won't have fire operations, response operations. One-stop shopping for the public, absolutely critical. An increase in downtown evening parking. So, because that's a day building and a day facility, the parking that will be there will be accessible to the public, you know, walkable distance from our rec center parking that we have, the old Randolph Extra lots that we have. So, it will, it will add to parking for evening, and central and efficient emergency operations center. So, with that, I will turn the details of the presentation over, do you want to do questions now, or do you want to wait until after the presentations? Chairman McRuskey?
No, I'd rather wait and let all the information come out, then we'll go by the board members one by one.
That makes sense. And I want to thank you again, I want to thank my team again. Chief Carroll and the Assistant Chief will be ready to take questions as well. And again, the input of the team was tremendous. The site selection is being considered closely by engineering and being vetted by engineering. Response, fire operations, being thoroughly vetted by fire. So, with that, I will turn that over to Doran Whittier. We're going to swap out laptops, or?
Fingers crossed. Oh, that's right. No, it is on, okay. All right, so you guys are controlling that one. We've got the one down here.
So, when you click that, it's definitely, you have to click that.
Got it. I don't know if Ricky wants to kick this off at a higher level, but Robin basically delivers the bulk of it. We, Chairman McRuskey, can geek out a little bit on some of the details. I appreciate that you noted you want that.
Good evening. It's nice to see everybody again. My name is Richard Palmory from Palmory Associates, Glenn Galred from Doran Whittier, and Taylor McDonald from Palmory Associates. Robin, I have to say, that was a fantastic presentation. I almost feel like I'm in Shark Tank. I'm thinking, okay, now who's ready to make a deal? That was fantastic. So, you've, you've taken a lot of, a lot of energy and you've added it into what we're going to be presenting this evening, and we're going to get into some of the basics as to the layouts, some of our view of the sites, and our view of Freeman Street, and we'll talk a little bit about the concepts. We have not gotten into the point where we're entering into a schematic design, we haven't done any estimating. You know, this, at this point, we're bouncing this concept off of you, we're looking for feedback. We want to make sure we're going down the right track. We sure feel like we do, and as Robin said, our working sessions are extremely unique. We're spitballing, we're throwing spaghetti against the wall, we're having free speech and free ideas, and it's developing into a very beautiful concept for the town of Stoughton and for the fire department. So, we'll let Glenn walk you through some of the, some of the steps we've taken, an extensive amount of the material and knowledge that has been gained over the last couple of years through all of the process, all of the sites that were reviewed, all of the programming sessions, the goods, the bads, out of all of that work has culminated into kind of what we're looking at today. So, I'll turn it over to Glenn for right now.
Yeah, well said, and I think we've got control here. No, that's fine, I can see pretty well. Again, I'm Glenn Galred from Doran Whittier, one of the team that's been on since the beginning. I think this fall will be three years, and we've seen a lot and gotten a lot of work done. And to Robin's point, none of it has been wasted, it's been a journey, at times gone off into tangents, but the program data is the data. We understand what the fire department needs, and whether it's one giant public safety building that includes police and fire, or a fire headquarters, which was the last iteration, or what we're exploring now, splitting the operations of a new facility from the administrative portion. I think the only thing that we're also not going to speak too much to are next steps, but the first one being getting your feedback about what to do here. So, what we've done, again, the programming work we've done, established the square feet, the spaces, the number of apparatus bays, the decontamination areas, all the parts and pieces you need. What we did is we took that program and split it up into these two functions. So, we've got a stripped-down firehouse, just operations only, it can be located in perhaps a less visual spot, right, the armory site. Proposal showed a much more civic-minded, grounded, stone, brick municipal front. Depending on the sites we get, the building could perhaps be a little simpler and achieve some cost savings by not being quite as, as formal. But again, so what that means is the Freeman Street building is about 12,000 square feet. That dovetails nicely with what we would need for administration, EOC, some Department of Health resources, and perhaps a little space left over for display. Two of the bays, frankly, in the way we've taken a quick look at the program, aren't necessarily needed, so they'd make a great spot, since they're already there, to house equipment. But to jump around a little bit, what we've got in our, of the two buildings, this plan, oh great, we're getting there. This is what the operations portion of the program looks like. This is strictly a firehouse, it's got the bays, the dormitories, really just what the basics are needed. This is, what we're looking at is the new Station One, new construction. Correct. This would be the from-scratch new building, which, depending on the site, could fit in a number of configurations. We've used this diagram because it works, we've worked with the chief and his staff to make sure that we've got it covered. If it needed to be manipulated, if a site demanded a different configuration, we can do that as well. But before going too far with that, we, again, want to make sure we're on the right track. Again, there's a, that plan simply extruded into a three-dimensional form. We've not really designed anything yet, but it could be a simple contemporary building like this. It could be different materials, it could be different aesthetics, but again, this is roughly the size and scale of what that new Station One would look like. About 26, 27,000 square feet, and again, the other 12,000 square feet at Freeman Street is exactly what the program showed that the fire department needs. Looking at one of the sites that we were told to explore, again, in a preliminary way because nothing is set in stone, the Prospect Street site where the former American Legion is, despite being pulled back from the main street a bit, has plenty of room, it's up high enough, there are minimal wetlands or other environmental concerns, it wouldn't be too close to other neighbors in a residential neighborhood, and the street between Prospect and Park, it's got great streets, arterial-sized roads to come out onto and respond. So, if this is the site that we get, I think it would serve the town well. If it's another site, we'll make it work. So, taking that exact same massing, which was not designed for the left site, which is one of the two that were considered further south in town, that one and a half acre site to the left, between its configuration, its skinny arrangement, and its inability to get to the street without, a bit of a challenge, and it also would be hard to separate public foot traffic. And it also would be hard to separate public foot traffic, visitor traffic, staff traffic, from apparatus coming out onto the apron and responding to calls. That, that we might advise against, although if it was the site, we can make it work. You guys are flexible, we can make it happen. It would look different. It'd be a much tighter stacked program. Next door, though, on that corner, there's plenty of room, depending on what the owners sold and what the arrangements were. We could fit this program, this building, on two acres or a little less if needed. That's 35 parking spaces, again, a 27,000 square foot building. Part of it one-story, part of it two-stores.
Glenn, can I jump in real quick?
Yeah, because I'm blasting through it because I feel like Robin...
I just wanted to highlight that the, the, the two and a half or three sites that you're seeing here, you know, I say two and a half because this one is really, you know, one and the same site, were the, were the responses we got through the RFP. So we got those in Friday. We asked Glenn to work very quickly, and can you just plop a building down on these sites to make sure size-wise they work? So just to give you an idea, these two sites that we're looking at, the Park Street site and the Prospect Street site, were the, were the responses that came in.
Great clarification. No, thanks, Taylor. And please, anyone, jump in. I, I don't want to get too far into the weeds too quick, or...
When you're, when you're looking at these site plans, notice the, the limited blacktop, if you go back to the earlier slide, whoever's controlling that. As Robin had mentioned earlier, with not having headquarters at Station Number One, the parking is really limited to staff and shift change requirements. And then, of course, the apparatus bays. So it, it's really a scaled-down model and truly a reflection of what you can do if you do not include the headquarters.
No, that's a great point. And again, in the biggest picture, going from a public safety facility, combined police and fire, we had upwards of 175 parking spaces. That's an enormous amount of paving. With the combined fire kind of command and operations in a, in a single building, we still needed upwards of 60 or 70 parking spaces to accommodate all the traffic. This gets us down to 34, 35 parking spaces, which more than covers shift change and the occasional visitor or staff. So that's a good point, Rick. It really does reduce the footprint on the site and the impact to the neighborhood. Okay. Now the fun part. I think Robin did a great job, and I, if I'm not mistaken, I think she was the one who first lobbed the grenade at the, at the, one of the meetings about the idea of reusing Freeman Street.
I'd give Mr. Tisdale some, some shout-out on that.
Okay. But I think as a team, after a moment or two of thinking about it, we all realized what a fantastic idea. And again, in the nuts and bolts realm of the project, the program space that the administration portion acquires fits quite well. There, there's probably a few tweaks to be made with the existing structure and to accommodate the program in there. But we would love to strip away some of the stuff that's been, been pasted over to the historic detail or removed, and bring at least part of that facade back to a, a more original-looking appearance. One of the things that we find really exciting is the idea of taking those existing original apparatus bays and making them the EOC meeting room, public front of house, right on the street, right off the sidewalk. One can imagine, right, if there's any number of events going on, it, it just makes perfect sense to come into a lobby, you can access that space, or go to the sort of business side of things upstairs. You know, I was happy the chief found that historic picture of what the building originally looked like. The more we looked at what it would take to get back to that, it might be a little difficult, but I think the main volume of the building could be restored quite nicely. And in this picture and in the existing facility, the two bays to the left are late adds and really not of any contributing historic significance. So, this is what, that existing building with that program that we generated would look like, or could look like. We certainly need to upgrade a number of things like a second stairway, an elevator, accessibility, toilets, mechanical systems, envelope. But because the shell is there, we could take advantage of an existing facility, the site, and the structure, and the utilities as well. But again, the big green area with all the tables and chairs is the meeting room, right off of the main lobby. Folks would come in and go upstairs during business hours to meet with the fire administrative staff, and the chief's office, and other support spaces. I guess I don't need to get in the weeds. It makes sense, right, that it's, it's where the business end of the department exists. And again, it fits well. We've included a, a public health office, and the, the small space labeled breakout room is a place where all the tables and chairs could go and be stored in when not in use. But while they're being used, that makes a nice space to have a, a small meeting during an emergency operation sort of situation. You could put a couple of tables in there, have kind of a command center or a sub-command center while the busy area outside is going. But in that diagram to the far left, you see that there is some extra space left over in those existing bays, whether it's storage for trailers or other utility items, or maybe the police have some things they need to offload. It still leaves some space for a display area, which is really appealing.
I want to get back to where we started. Freeman Street is not a candidate for a renovation for a new fire station. The structure, the apparatus bays, all of the elements of the facility, the height of the first-floor ceilings, do not allow that facility to accommodate the newer, larger apparatus. And so Freeman Street is, is not a candidate for a fire station renovation, but it's an excellent candidate for a headquarters operations, emergency operations center for the town. So it's repurposing a building that is perfectly suitable for that, all the while maintaining the fabric and the, the connection to the town center. So it's a, it's a, it's a win-win from that perspective.
That's a great point. And among other things that make it difficult, if not impossible, to repurpose as a modern fire station, are the structural and seismic and other codes that would need to have that facility brought up to. That's where we get to the point where it's just not cost-effective. It's not in your best interest to spend that much money to fight the uphill battle. As administrative use, it's essentially a business officer or a much lower classification in the code, so it keeps it a little simpler and easier to, to imagine doing that. Couple of quick reference slides. The, this is just an example or a diagram to show the new, proposed new-size building versus what they've got now. Again, just, it helps to visualize that the entire Freeman Street building could fit...
You're almost done.
All right. The entire Freeman Street facility could fit in part of the apparatus bays of an appropriately-sized fire station. And so that's what this diagram was trying to help show. I think that's it. We need to hear from you guys.
So we are all available for questions and answers. Some of the members of the team are out here, as well as the chief and the assistant chief for any questions, but we have, between the consultants and the majority of the team here.
Okay, thank you. What we're going to do then is, I'll start from my left going right, and ask board members on their questions, please ask one question at a time, which will allow each one of the board members to get a question in, and hopefully it'll flow a little easier instead of, you know, going down rabbit holes. So with that, I will start with Mr. Gito.
First of all, I'm really intrigued by this approach. I came into the room not knowing what was going to happen, and was a little concerned when I, I was thinking about perhaps this building being used for some other purpose, but I... So my question. I noticed that the, the sites that you were talking about would have a Station One that pretty much captured the whole site, that you wouldn't have much opportunity for expansion of those. So in the distant future, I presume that you'd be thinking about having a, another substation if you needed additional support in a certain part of town? Is that, would that be the next step, or maybe you never would have to get there? I don't know.
Well, so, thank you. We really, you know, when we started looking at sites, I've always said that a three, kind of almost triangle eight in the town would be a, a way to go. That being said, when we sat down and looked and kind of divided the town into the districts, as it was put to me, it now makes Station Two a better response area. I, I'd hate to ever say, no, we don't need additional buildings or whatever, and as the town grows, we must grow with it to, to take care of those needs for the community. But right now, the way that this is situated, it divides the town almost into like an east-west response. The times, as far as our response times, are, really fall into, I think it was like 88% under four minutes to cover the majority of our major fire incidents on that, on that data report that they had done before, and 90, I believe 92% under the eight minutes. So this really does a nice job of covering the whole town, our major high, high-target areas, and, you know, and obviously having that headquarters, and I'll just talk operationally, there's a lot of areas and a lot of communities that have their headquarters separate from, from the stations. But now headquarters, our command staff, is located right between the two stations. And what that does for us is it allows us to, you know, either have our training, both depart, both stations come to Freeman Street for training, and they're right back to being able to be centrally located to respond while they're in training. To, to go right back to almost Freeman Street, obviously the building can't be adapted to fit the apparatus, but, you know, i- if we have training, we go down there, we park out front, we have our training, we go back to our quarters. But should calls come in, which happen quite a bit, we now have to respond from a centrally located place. I, I think that this fits all our operational needs as of today.
If I, if I might follow up, one of the questions that we did talk about with Mark Tisdale was, where is the likely future growth of town? So we're pretty much at close to residential maximum build-out. We're not going to see a lot more homes developed. We may see a hotel along the sewer line. We may see some biotech. And this particular site location takes that into consideration, that that would likely be the part of town where we're going to see the build-out and the growth. So while we can never predict exactly what our numbers will look like down the road, what this does do is it anticipates if everything works together as we hope it will, and that sewer line really generates what we, what it, it appears that it is doing and going to do, this location allows for that growth for those decades that we want to look forward to.
Ms. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, everyone, for the presentation. I thought that was, it was very informative. My question is specifically about a fire station. The administration and public health is really secondary. I was expecting more information about fire statement, but here's my question. My question is related to what is the outlook probability and functionality of a fire station to make it sustainable? And as I was listening to the presentation, I can't help but think about telephones and how telephones used to be large and bulky, and now we have our smartphones. Or a fire truck that used to be so small, and now it's large. So what is the outlook of fire apparatus, a fire truck, the, the usability of a fire station? So I know there, there are a lot of pundits that talk about probabilities on everything, so I just lend my question to an expert in that area.
Why don't you answer as quickly as you can, but I can give the architectural implications of the site.
Sure. Sure. So, opposite of phones, the fire apparatus has grown, and it's truly outgrown Freeman Street. I actually did a quick, you know, rundown of the numbers, and since 2017, where we really tracked it, I believe one-third of all incidents with the apparatus were at Freeman Street, or right on Freeman Street. And it's because the trucks have gotten larger. And, and the reason why the trucks have gotten larger is because our job has gotten more encompassing. So now, you know, especially the way we run, we can't be specific to run just a rescue truck or just a, you know, a specialty-type vehicle. We have to have everything on our apparatus. So when we, when we purchase a vehicle, we have to take into the, you know, not only motor vehicle accidents, fire incidents, hazmat, EMS, we have to have everything on that apparatus, which the, the members of the fire department can attest to, they got to a point where, you know, stuff was falling out of the trucks. So we, we actually had to make more cabinet space, and we take that into consideration in design. I don't see it, I don't see the job shrinking. I, I see the job actually becoming more expanded, and the, the station, the fire station, has to account for that. We are just squeaking in the trucks. Certainly Chairman McRuskey can attest to the fact that, you know, with his 1928 vehicle backing it in, and we have some actual video of when they first moved into Station One, Freeman Street Station from Town Hall, they, they were able to actually, you know, put what a ladder was at that time and just kind of even manipulate it around and tuck it in. We just barely get by with our ladder backing in now. So to answer your point, the functionality of the fire station, the, the growth of the fire service is growing. It, it continues to grow. The stuff that we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis is not just, we don't just respond to fires. It's EMS, motor vehicle accidents, hazmats, gas, major gas leaks, and we have to have all our equipment ready to go. And so, you know, our trucks have to carry that. So it's not, I can, I can assure you, the apparatus is not getting smaller. Buildings are getting bigger. So we have to have the capability to, to respond and, and do our job in these bigger buildings, which, again, goes back to equipment. So, you know, and, and they can talk to the point that the, there's not, the NFPA has set standards forth of how big bays have to be, how, you know, and Freeman Street just doesn't meet that. So, yeah, I see it growing. You can take the actual architectural budget.
Yeah, I think, I think that's an excellent question, looking to the future, why we're doing what we're doing now, and why some of the sizes are what they are. Thankfully, we build the, the new stations to a standard that there's no way a truck could be bigger, because it wouldn't be able to fit down the highway, right? The DOT has standards for heights and widths already, so our typical doors are at least 14 feet wide and 14 feet tall. So any truck that the department is likely to get in the next 50 years will fit in there just fine. And I'd suspect that you guys have had to special-order every piece of equipment so that it could fit in Freeman Street. And that's at added cost. That's a lot of customization that has to happen to accommodate the older building. And of course, it's money well spent, because it's what you've got and what you need to deal with. But the, I'm going to circle back, I forgot, I think, the discussion point about future expansion. I think that's a great point, that maybe when we look at a final site, that we make sure there might be room to add a bay, or a few offices, or a few parking spaces, and not just take up the entire site. But I brought up the, the floor plans to show that there are a couple of other, other parts of that operational aspect. You pull the truck in, if these guys have been in a place that had tires burning or other car... that it could fit in Freeman Street, and that's at added cost. That's a lot of customization that has to happen to accommodate the older building. And of course, it's money well spent, because it's what you've got and what you need to deal with. But, I'm going to circle back, I forgot, I think, the discussion point about future expansion. I think that's a great point, that maybe when we look at a final site, that we make sure there might be room to add a bay, or a few offices, or a few parking spaces, and not just take up the entire site. But I brought up the floor plans to show that there are a couple of other parts of that operational aspect. You pull the truck in, if these guys have been in a place that had tires burning or other carcinogens, this is set up to come in and clean all that stuff off before you get into any living or other clean areas of the building. That's a little bit of a related point, but, to the point of how an existing facility meets the needs now and for the future.
If I might, I think one of the things about this plan is, the new construction is where the bulk of the cost is. And by taking out things that are not truly public safety immediate response items and putting them somewhere else, we can actually focus on that more expensive construction, if you will, and keeping it to the true needs for the responses of a true firehouse, as opposed to putting that new construction money into office space when we have a perfectly good building for that, as Glenn pointed out. That building is fine for office space, and frankly, that also helps with the money that we put into that building not being totally wasted either, because we have spent money on Freeman Street. So now to repurpose it, at least some of that investment isn't wasted. But I think to your question, this really allows us to build a firehouse that focuses on new construction that meets those needs, not needs of office space.
I'd like to add something to that, when we're talking about sustainability. In some cases, sustainability is easy to measure when we're talking about size of apparatus or growth of the department. But what we focus on is what Glenn touched on earlier, and it can't be understated, the importance of the safety of the firefighter. The importance of the ability to decontaminate before entering the living areas. The importance of having separate bunk rooms. Sleep deprivation is a serious, serious issue in our public, in our first responders. So, the importance of having separate bunk rooms and separate environments to cater to each separate firefighter. Now, there was a time when we designed, when we were designing fire facilities, and we'd have one thermostat for the dormitory, for the bunk rooms. And one firefighter would be opening a window, the other would be closing a window. The importance of having, you know, the ability to have men and women serving in the department comfortably, you know, those are sustainability issues that we look at for the growth of the department and of the town, not to mention the ability to offer top-ranked facilities for the town of Stoughton.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Mr. Carr.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the best quote of the night that I've heard on this side is this, "The existing site, the shell is all there." You said it. That was on station one. You said, "Doesn't matter, the existing site's there, we can make it work." We had an existing site. I don't know why we even, we've walked away from it. We're looking to spend 1.5, $2 million of throwaway money. That's throwaway money when you have a site. You said, "We have the station one, we can repurpose that, do this, do that." I thought we were getting a fire station. There probably isn't anybody in this room that is more tied to the fire department than me. I've respected all these, these older fellows out here and the younger ones coming in. Half of that fire department, the older fire department, worked for my father. I was around them all the time. I am so wanting a fire station that, next thing I know, we're answering more of the feel-good and the romantics of everything. I just, I don't know, was that cost thirty million? Is that what I saw at the top? Was that thirty million? Or where are we?
Thirty million was the estimated cost of a fire station that would house headquarters, would, the original concept of a one station, with headquarters, training, everything we need in it. It was at least thirty million, that was back in March, before we saw the increase in prices. That did not include any land acquisition, or any demolition or site work on a particular site.
I look at the Sharon Station, everybody was all crowing about the Sharon Station, what a great deal, what a great deal. It's not a great deal. They ain't too happy about that place. It's a postage stamp, jammed in on a campus. That's the whole deal that everybody was hung up on, the campus. What is more faster than if that fire station was at the armory to get to the new bio on Turnpike Street? The building would be on Turnpike Street. Nothing against you guys, not at all. I believe what you say, I go with it. But I'll say again, we were all in on the Taj Mahal in the woods, when it was a combined station, nobody had a problem with response time. Now that's the whole gear. I'm just looking out, not for myself, I'm looking out for the firefighters, because I want you guys to get a station, I want you to get it now. But I have to look at who voted me in, too. People who are trying to afford this thing. So, I appreciate what's been done. I thought we had, we were going to look at the armory, but we've just thrown that aside. We haven't, we're not even going to entertain that. And we own it. So, let's go out and buy something. I don't know if you guys ever walked the Legion property, but I used to hunt it.
I was afraid.
It's very marshy. There's two brooks in there. I guess we throw away the 200-foot limit from the one that has a name. There's a culvert in there that's 48 inches. There's so much water on that, to tell me there isn't an issue? I don't believe it for a minute, because you now have a nine-large subdivision above there, sending you more water. More water. Are we going to end up with the same problem we're having that, too? We're going to mold problems, this and that? It's just, I don't know. I thought I was going to be seeing something terrific. This is great. I'm all, I like it, but I just, I'm not sold on it. I want a fire station. I just, I thought dispatch would move out of the police department, go over to station one, be put in there to give the police department a little space to span them out for some time, but no. We did away with the community room in this station here, and we put it in another spot. So, there's no wash. It's all being spent.
I think I see maybe eight or 10 questions buried in.
I know, I'm sorry.
A lot of really great information.
But this is the first we've seen this.
I'm going to go.
We weren't prepared, everything's been top secret. Why I'm on this board, and why I'm a selectman, I don't know, but it was top secret.
Well, I'm sorry, I have to, this is not top secret, this is very fluid, and we've been working very hard to bring you this concept. The Legion property has not been settled yet. We're in review of the options that were presented just last Friday. Every site that we look at will be looked at from a wetland's perspective, and waterways, and so on and so forth, and access. The whole goal for this evening was to present a concept of the direction we believe is the best answer for the town of Stoughton and for the fire department.
I didn't dispute that, I thought that was great.
If I also.
I thought the concept is good.
Which concept?
What you're trying to propose with the building, but what I'm trying to say is, why didn't we vet the armory a little bit better? Why didn't we look at that building?
So, if I might, we did, and I'm going to let the fire chief address some concerns about that. I also want to point out that that Prospect Street site has not had a deep dive, but I do believe that engineering has taken preliminary looks. It does take into consideration the water on there, the distance, that basic placement of that on the property took all of that into consideration. Obviously, until we are ready to buy something, we don't do every test and survey and everything else. But all the preliminary looks through our engineering and Doran Whittier have shown that that is viable, as well as the Park Street property. That's why when I said to you tonight, the two properties that we have, we know are both viable, there has been, there has been, it did not just, okay, well, they bid it, and we haven't even looked at it. Because, again, these were properties that had been discussed for the past year and a half. All of these had been sort of on radars and off radars, and that was not.
I understand what you're saying, but I couldn't just ask one question. I can't go down this table on something of this much that was shown to us, ask one question. What was I going to ask?
I'd like to respond to the Armory site, if I may. I just want to go back in history. The issue, the issue, if you recall, one of the primary issues in the last discussions we had when we were looking at the Armory site was that it did not provide the best coverage south of town. And ultimately, a third station would be needed, ideally for the town. And there was a lot of discussion about that, and a lot of angst, because the community wanted to, we just want one station, we don't want two. So, eventually, the south station started to grow. We did some RFQs, nothing surfaced from it, and what we were presenting at the time was the Armory site, because that was really the only option we had, but that wasn't the best option. And now, we've gone back, and as I said before, just really had some free thinking, and looking at it, saying, do you want two stations, or do you want three? The town can't afford three. The town can't afford the operations for three. So, we need to figure out how to do two stations and give the best response time possible for the town. And that's what we've done. So, we can go back and look at the Armory site, but it's not going to give you the coverage you want, and it's not going to be favorable, and it's, quite frankly, it's not going to be supported. I believe that this presentation and this solution that's being presented right now, provided we can get a site in the south station of town, is your best solution to keep it to two stations, keep your operations effective, and allow the nucleus to be the center of town headquarters, as the chief had described before. This is, this is, this is a great scenario for the town. So, I wouldn't want to, let's not get too hung up on the Armory. It was a nice, it's a nice site, the town owns it, but the bottom line is, it's not solving the problem for us.
So, if I may, Mr. Carr, I agree with you, there was, at one time, a need. I think that with the fire department, when we first got the Armory, and it was, you know, for a dollar, and it sat up on Chief Jodden's wall, proud of it, but even he had stated, and I was just reading some recent articles about, you know, he would be going for, it wasn't to replace Freeman Street, it was going to be a substation, we'd probably put an engine up there. And even in that article, he would be, he already said that he would be looking for a fourth station. I can't, I wouldn't feel good about doing a station and asking for a third station, and that would be a need, if we were to put a station up there. You know, they start going through response times, and I was the one that pointed out, response times are one thing, you can draw a circle on a map, whatever, but if I need, or if they need to get down to Washington Street, I could not see them cutting it up, you know, and cutting through by, you know, down to Walnut Street and trying to, you know, with either Halloran Park being busy, kids out. So, apparatus responding to me is, just to be conscientious of the fact of, how do you respond? We've even had incidents where, you know, not for any other reason, you know, some hose fell off a truck going down the road, and thank God, nobody was hurt. But in Cambridge years ago, somebody was killed. I can't feel good about our response times and safety, and then how would they live with it? So, if we were to just take station two and the Armory, I would be up here asking for a third station right away. And Assistant Chief and I worked on a, you know, a scenario with three stations, and we would need more staffing. And at minimum, we'd have to hire 12 more additional, because the way our shift works, and the way for us to properly cover the town safely, and for the members of the fire department to respond safely, that's what we would need. We can't send one person in a fire truck. It's not the fire truck that does the work, it's the firefighters on the truck, right? So, and, you know, I wouldn't feel good about coming to this town and saying, hey, that's all great, we got a substation up there, now we need a third station. I can appreciate the hard work that went into getting the Armory, even going back on some of the things, and they repurposed it for rec, and they did a lot of, a lot of things for it, and I think you spearheaded a lot of that, and we do appreciate that. But that, that area was not meant to, that station was not meant to take over for Freeman Street. We still have the problem with Freeman Street, right? It's too small, we're having a hard time responding out of there. The whole town agrees, we need a new fire station. So, what is most cost-effective to the town? One fire station that you see here, we did not, you know, we had a hard time about having administration there, we had to shrink it, we had to make it small. We have a building, and I think that's what they meant, we have a footprint, we have a building, and I said, I have no problem. Bring it back to the way it was, it will look beautiful. The town won't lose that historically. I spent 27 years there, there's some of these retired guys, spent 36, you know, I think Don Jimm is going on 42 years there. No, I'm just kidding, Don. But the idea is that, that we don't really want, it's hard to lose, too, right? So, if we can make that into something and restore it back to the way it was from the outside, I think it would hold some serious history here. And yeah, maybe we're getting a little too emotional to it, but it's like a house we grew up in. So, if we can keep that, repurpose it, still call it a headquarters, and, you know, we're, we might be one of the only towns in the Commonwealth that have two headquarters on their front door, you know? And so, now we have a headquarters, we have a good place for our staff, we do have a fire station. We brought it to a fire station within to meet the needs of this town, and to meet the needs of the firefighters. It is probably the basic needs of what the NFPA, you know, requires. They have a place where they can decon when they get out of a bad call, and kind of, you know, and then go into a clean area. Even, and that's so important now, because they're now even making clean areas, you know, for our trucks. The cabs have to be clean, right? So, it's a big problem in the fire service. People are going out with cancer left and right, and we need to protect them. So, when given this task, and maybe I brought a little bit different to what maybe Chief Larrity, with all due respect to what he did, I think he did a great job. I think, you know, they worked hard, and we were, all we did was able to pick up the ball and run with it, you know, but I looked at it a little bit different. I just came off the trucks, and responses aren't just straight down the road. That's not what a response is. Response is, you know, making, making decisions, do I have to cut through Halloran Park? Do I have to cut through, is school getting out? Right? Like, there's kids out. Is it a Saturday? Is it a nice day? Kids running their bikes? Those are all factors that I take in, and I think the Assistant Chief was right behind me, we were like, yeah, this is, this is what we mean by safely responding at a good time to actually make a difference to the incident we're going to. So, there's a station, we wanted to keep that quarters. I'm sorry, I went a little too long.
Thank you, Chief Carroll, I appreciate that, I do. And to you, Assistant Chief, thanks. This is, this is what I wanted to hear. That's what I wanted to hear. I didn't, I don't want to, you know what I mean? That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
I just wanted to state for the record, you know, it's, I just have to respond, this was not a secretive process, this was a process that was directed, and if you're not happy with it, I can understand, but lay that blame on me. As the chair, I thought it was more appropriate, and it was discussed that this would be a presentation. It was a collision of ideas, it brought people that know what they're doing, our paid staff, and it needs to be pointed out that for two and a half years, almost two and a half years, we've done a pretty good job of paying people to talk to us. And since April of this year, you know, three months later, we're sitting here with a station that can be built. Okay? So, I think if we want to talk, that's, that's the fact, is that we've spent over $300,000, you know, of the taxpayers' money, talking, just talking, and throwing ideas out that did not work. And here we are, after three months, with a plan. So, my hat is off, I applaud you all for what you've done here. It's not the finished product, we know that. We're going to have to do some deep dives now, there's going to be more work for this board, but I just, I felt that I had to say that, so, and I apologize for taking up time. Uh, turn.
I just wanna say one thing to you, to the engineers, that nobody has come back, not the committee that worked with you prior, to say what the problem was with the Armory. None of them came and said anything to anybody, they just ignored, didn't explain. You guys have explained things, but they made it real, now it's together, so now we know. And I wanted that out there to the residents, 'cause that's what I get from them, is why, 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 we own. That's the only reason why I wanted to get that out there, that those questions have never been brought to us by that other committee. So, thank you, thank you, Robin, too.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Kevie.
Point of order, or, actually, sorry, point of information, I have two questions, relatively brief ones. Are we coming back around and asking additional questions?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. So let me start off with just a couple of statements here. First of all, if, you know, things that are easy get done easily, we've been batting this around for a very long time, trying to find solutions, probably a decade, you know, at least, of people trying to find solutions to a set of problems that we have with regard to the fire station. And most of that has to do, I believe, with really having many of our interests in it at odds with one another. And just in a simple case, you'll have, you know, the needs for a fire station, and you also have the needs of taxpayers, and, but we actually have quite a bit more than that, there's a lot of people who have been invested in this problem, who feel confident in certain solutions, and so there's been, you know, in some cases, just a hard, it's been a hard time fitting all the puzzle pieces together. So I think that we've had a hard time addressing that. I really applaud your efforts here, I think these have been fabulous. The outside-the-box thinking, I think, is going to help us, there's many, many places where I especially see a benefit. First, I love the idea of opening up the funding sources of this, maybe not all of it, but a lot of this work can be funded through alternative sources, other than borrowing, or directly from taxes, and I, and any effort that we can, anytime we can do that, we certainly try, and I think we have really excellent grant writers and people who pursue that on our team, so I feel like if it's gonna be done, we can do it, we can certainly pursue those. I love that, it will definitely take some of the costs away from the taxpayers. Another thing that I very much like is reusing Freeman Street, though I am not as, I didn't, I haven't worked there for 26 years, so I'm maybe perhaps less sentimental, and so, you know, I certainly appreciate that, and there's a big part of me that is, I don't know, say, sort of old-fashioned and superstitious even, about not wanting things to change too much. So that's certainly nice, but, but just in a strictly financial sense, we have put a lot of money into that building, that building, to sort of bandage it until somebody can come up with a better plan. And though I think most people appreciate it, that at some point, we might just have to pull the plug and sort of lose that investment, it sounds like we don't necessarily have to do that. There's certainly gonna be a lot of significant changes, and not everything we've done will be kept, but I think more of, most of the important things that we've done, certainly to the preservation of the building, for historical purposes, we retained, as well as, I think, one of our bigger costs, which might have actually been air conditioning, a couple of years ago, a huge investment, investment into a temporary solution there, which most likely, I'm assuming, we could retain as well. So, I think that's a really great way to also take advantage of the investments that we've already put into that building, and not lose them. The first question I have, so anyways, long story short, thank you very much, I think this is really clever, and I think this definitely solves a lot of the problems that we've had difficulty solving in the past. The first question I have is a very simple one, very pragmatic, one of the issues that we have at Freeman Street is the fact that it was built before the ADA came into existence. And using it for a fire station, that has always come up as a stumbling block, how do you make this building ADA compliant? Using it as a headquarters, and certainly one where the public, we anticipate the public to really utilize that building more than they would any of the others, what will go into making that building ADA compliant, for the purposes of, you know, having it as a headquarters? And thank you.
That's a great question, that is clear, and I can answer very simply as well. It's a significant renovation that would happen, essentially scrape most of it clean on the inside, keep the bones, but it would need an elevator, all the toilet facilities would be accessible, as obviously with an elevator, the second floor is, it would become a code-compliant facility, soup to nuts, for all the administrative or officer guest uses. But yeah, as it is now, it'd be difficult to kind of Band-Aid that solution, so it would, it would be a significant renovation to make it happen, it'd be quite nice.
That's been considered in the, in the cost of that, was part of the process.
None of the questions I have are gonna be like, things that you didn't, I know, I know you guys have already thought about, so, no curveballs, but yeah, I assume that you would've worked that in, I was just kind of curious what the solution would be. Thank you very much.
Pretty about, we did have a discussion on that, you know, if you put the public portion on the first floor, do you still need to put an elevator in? So we actually did go through, it wasn't just a, "Yeah, it has to be ADA compliant", we actually looked at, were there ways to do it a little, you know, less expensively? And there really aren't, and that's okay, and that was just part of the consideration. But it was a good question, because it was something we actually banded about a good bit.
I'd add that even the new building, proposed new building, is completely accessible as well. There is a way you can attempt, as a municipality, to file a letter with the Attorney General's Office, stating, usually the Chief, and the town attorney would state, basically, it's for, the second floor, or other inaccessible areas, are only for able-bodied staff. And that used to be pretty well-accepted, and some communities roll the dice and put that letter on file, but it doesn't prevent anyone from the public from suing the town or the community. So, it really, there's no way we would ever recommend constructing a public facility with public money that wasn't completely accessible, because if in 50 years, it becomes a part of a senior center or office spaces, it has to meet the code.
Even something as simple as if we take schoolchildren on a tour, if members of a board, for instance, wanted to take a tour of it, and couldn't do stairways, I mean, it just, it is, it's public money, and we have an obligation to make it all publicly accessible at any time, even if it's not routinely public space.
I'll head back down to my left again, Mr. Gito.
Haven't answered questions.
Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is regarding the language you're using as "historical", so, I heard what Fire Chief Carroll said, but my question is a little bit different about, is it a historical designation? Or, because I think of all the new and modern buildings that we have, like this state-of-the-art high school, and like our new public library, so what made you decide to even use the term "historical", or do you mean "historical", or is that just to be used loosely?
That's an awesome question, and I appreciate you picked up on the nuance in, in the way I sort of, maybe, not mischaracterized, but oversimplified. It is not a contributing structure in that it's been modified, and the doors and windows and the finishes have been modified so much over the years, it's not a historic contributing structure. What we've talked about as a team is maybe trying to pull back some of those modernizations, and give it some of the historic character or feel, even if frankly, it's mainly aesthetic and on the street side. The inside is gonna be state-of-the-art, energy-efficient, modern, useful space, so it's, it's not a misnomer, but it is really kind of a historic light idea, that the street side maybe put doors and windows in that more replicate the historic appearance. But no, not, not single-pane glazed wood frame windows and no insulation. But again, very, very good question.
I'm gonna add, add something to that, just a little tearjerker. You know, firefighters, policemen, they really have, they take a lot of pride in their roots, in their department's roots, and if you go into any department, you can see the, the old apparatus, the horse-drawn carriages, the horse-drawn engines, all of those elements. Think of it like a lighthouse. Lighthouses don't use candles anymore, in many cases, they're taking, tearing down lighthouses, they're putting small little LED beacons on hills. And, you know, where would we be, would we be today if we just kept on tearing down all our lighthouses and just putting up beacons? So, this is, this is a station that means a lot to the town of Stoughton, if not just that immediate neighborhood, so why not keep it, why not bring it back to the way it looked before?
I just do wanna make a comment on that, when we talked about the historic part, is that that building was voted a historic building by the Stoughton Historical Commission, and it is available for funding, so it's good that way, that, again, we're gonna look at it and see something that's older. I call him the Fire Department historian, Don Chipman, who's sitting up there, who is, he puts his face into his hand every time somebody mentions a name, but, you know, when you have the value there, we have so much to look at that building, you know, to look at the historic value, and to incorporate that into any future, which is awesome, so, not to stop my members, Mr. Carrera. Mr. Carrera's all set, Mr. Kevie.
Thank you, so I only have one other question, and this is for the Fire Chief and Deputy Chief, or Assistant Chief. One of the, one of the things I think most people appreciate about both fire stations and, fire departments and police stations, is that their leadership structure and methods are, you know, they're sophisticated, but also, very, a lot of things are based on traditions, but also, things like co-location, having people in the same area, having sort of a rigid set of expectations, in a sense, hopefully I'm mischaracterizing that. With having the leadership essentially moved into a separate facility, you know, I can imagine that there would have to be some sort of, you know, additional, sort of, things that you do within your, the way you lead the department, to ensure that, that what you lose from having that co-location, you don't lose in total, you're still able to, you know, have the open door, or you could have like, you know, the access to, to the people who work in the department, and they have access to you, and it's not sort of the people up on the hill that nobody ever gets to see, right? And so my, I'm just curious, and I'm sure this is, this has to have factored into your thinking, as you've been working through all of this, just, you know, what approaches you think you'll need to incorporate into your leadership style, or your processes, to ensure you don't lose some of that, that thing, the one-on-one that you specifically have with your employees?
Thank you, Mr. Kevie. That's actually a great question, and it's, when, you know, a month ago, when I took helm, I suppose, or became the Fire Chief, it was conversations that the Assistant Chief and I had had over numerous times. Yes, that happens, and it did happen, and we lost it with Station One, and why, I don't know, I wasn't in that position. Our goal, once we got settled in, is to make one of us, and even our deputy, available at every roll call, make sure we're getting there. I think what this does is actually helps, 'cause now we are central, right? So we're not down at Station Two, away from Station One, we're centrally located. Right now, with our training, sometimes they have to just do it down at Station One, because it's a busy day with permits coming in, and trucks coming in, and, you know, foot traffic, that, all right, let's hold it up at Station One. We may go, you know, some time without seeing, seeing each group, and so, with training there, they're going to be there. We try to get in training almost every day, at least one, once, once a week with each shift, so now they're gonna, it's gonna bring them there, especially in the classroom aspect. We've made it a point to get out to the, to the off-site training. I don't think that it's gonna hinder, I think it's going to help. And also, it's also centrally located where if an engine, an ambulance, a ladder, they need to come down and stop in, whether it's to review some reports, or go over some stuff, it brings, they're not traveling really far, they're still actually on an overlapping district, so if they have to go on a call, they're right there. I think it actually works better than the position we're in now. It is a great question, because it's something we struggle with, and we made it a priority of ours, taking over, that we make sure that we do not lose that. It's important to get that face-to-face and get that contact, and I don't wanna lose that, I know sometimes, especially, you know, my father was a chief, it's, it's hard for them, you know, the chief walks in, you know, and things get quiet and they walk away, but I'm trying to bring a different, different, you know, maybe a different personality to that, and I think with the Assistant, or the Assistant Chief, and this is a plan we have, we gotta get out there, we gotta see, I think this is actually working better for what we had in mind originally, before this concept came up, so, I hope that answered your question.
Does, I appreciate, I appreciate the response.
Mr. Gito, any other questions? Ms. Roberts. Mr. Carrera. Mr. Kevie.
Just thank you.
I have no questions, I believe that as we go along, things will pop up, like, the mic is on, you can't hear me? Bet you can now. Yeah, I just, again, I just wanna reiterate that it's a great plan, I mean, I believe you knocked it out of the ballpark, everyone involved, my congratulations, that we have something that is a starting point, that we got some questions here, now you've got some land to review, do a deeper dive into the land, whether it's gonna be suitable for it, whether it fits appropriately, you're probably gonna hit some roadblocks, and I think what I'll do is I'll come up with a couple of ideas as to how we move forward, but I think I'd like to give you folks a couple of weeks, anyway, to, I would ask that anything, any presentations you've had tonight, that the board get them first thing tomorrow morning, both of them, with no delay, so hopefully by 9:30, they'll all be in influence.
I actually believe Deb has both of them.
Okay.
And if you would like Chairman McCrisky, we can also put that on the website for the public as well.
Yeah, do that as well, and again, with Mr. Carrera, we make sure that we print out a copy of everything, and make sure he gets them as soon as possible as well. So it, someday I'll teach you how to download that stuff. Okay, so, and I'll thank you again, and we'll, we'll talk briefly, and, you know, my colleagues, I know, will be calling me with any suggestions they have, and we look forward to hearing the next step, so thank you all very much.
And so we're presuming that the board is comfortable with us continuing to move in this direction?
Yes, we're not gonna stop anything, I think every, it's, I'm not gonna ask her a vote, but I'm pretty sure that all the head nodding says, "Keep moving forward."
I like that, okay.
Okay, I mean, it's great, I mean, you took two years and did it in three months, God bless you, I mean, I just can't, I'm impressed, I mean, it's really a good thing, so. So with that, "Keep moving forward", same amount of process, that means by the, by the time we get done, another, I don't figure, it's gotta be half that, because all the heavy lifting's been done, so in a month, we should come back with a realistic project, with cost analysis, a site. So in a month, we should come back with a realistic, uh, project, with cost analysis, a site, and be able to get rolling pretty fast.
I'm actually hopeful that on August seventeenth, Susan is working on some debt models. Once we hammer down clearly which of those two parcels, uh, we will be able to look closely. She's in touch with bond counsel now, setting up some times for bond counsel to speak with us on our different options. And what we're hopeful to do is present the board on the seventeenth, once we get, again, the site just hammered down. A site, this basic plan that you're seeing, a financing model, but likely for financing, probably maybe three or four different options that the board may look at. It may be partial debt exclusion, it may be putting it simply onto the, the budget debt service line item, it may be a mixture of both. It may be options that might include, because we can't guarantee, we're hopeful to have the local revenue loss, the revenue loss numbers. By that time, if we have that, we might even be able to know that we may have three million more. But we're gonna go with the, the highest number to start, you know, and, and then the grant money will sort of be gravy if we can. But we are somewhat confident that there will be some significant grant money coming off. So I'm hopeful that by the seventeenth, we can present you, if we can put it on the agenda, again, be a much shorter presentation, there'll be some financing models for you to look at, basically what you saw tonight structurally, conceptually, and a hammer down on the land.
See those models before the meeting.
Yeah, I, if, if, timing, if, if, a lot of this comes down to how quickly we get things in. If Susan, depending on when we can get our appointment with our debt people and we can get some more concrete numbers, uh, as soon as we have some, um, options for models, I'm happy to share them with everybody ahead of time.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we should have that information ahead of time, so we can look at it. And if it takes another meeting before, before all this stuff is together, I would prefer that.
Absolutely. If we are looking, uh, I, I sent an email, in fact, I see our moderator out there, at a November fifteenth fall meeting, uh, optional, that's what we're looking at tentatively now. That gives us until early October to finalize details for the warrant. So even if we go to the end of August or early September with some concrete numbers, that still gives us, um, a good four weeks after that to still be able to make town meeting, if that's our goal. So, just to give you some general rough timeframe, the, I called it the Fall Town Meeting, I absolutely did, because I agree there will always be one.
I'll call it the Special Fall Town Meeting, because it will be a special meeting. Uh, I wanna ask, um, I wanna ask Sue, and then right now she's saying, oh, no what. I saw your eyes perk up. Uh, I wanna ask Sue, will this be similar to the team that you had when we did the borrowing and the, uh, cost projections for this beautiful building we're sitting in? Is it gonna be a similar group of people? That's what I was waiting to hear. Because, that's, yeah, because that was the, that was the same group of people with, uh, another town manager that put the funding plan together for this building when it didn't come up. So it, uh, we have the right team in place, thank you. So with that, I think we will move on. Gentlemen, thank you very, very much. Chief, Assistant Chief, you knocked it out of the ballpark. No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, what, we will take this to five-minute recess, and then we'll come back in here. We are back from our five fifteen or fifty-minute break, sorry for that. So let's get back to the meeting. Uh, the, the, the next section is our Board and Committee applicants. We have, um, on the Citizens Committee, uh, we have Open Space, Zoning Board, and Council on Aging. These positions are all vacancies, and there's an opening, a vacant position for each of these. So I would, um, ask the board that we take a vote, anybody that wants to make a motion for approval, that we vote all the Open Space, Zoning Board, and we can mention for Open Space slash Juan Fox and so forth in the motion, and just vote them all as one vote. And the last one, as we talked at the recent meeting, I would like to represent the board on the Brockton Area Transit. Uh, again, that's a vacancy at this point, there's nobody in that. So as the, the Chair of the Board, I think we can, uh, be able to get some good things out of bat here and there, and I'd like to be on top of that for us. So on eight fifteen on Boards and Commissions, would anyone like to, uh, make a motion? And that is for, right, that is for Open Space, Mr. Juan Fox, Zoning Board, Jeffrey Iverson, Council on Aging, Ellen Lash, Joanne Callanan, Boyd Walls, and in Brockton Area Transit, Joseph McChrisky as representative to the board. Motion's been made and seconded on the vote, Mr. Gito. Ms. Roberts? Uh, sorry?
Be recorded, I guess, yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Juan, thank you. Juan is in the hall with us tonight. And Mr. Iverson, I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Is that, is that my slide missing?
Yeah.
What did he, what do you wanna give him? Do you want, if he wanted an alternate or a permanent spot?
Oh, that's right, too. Where is it?
That was permanent.
I, I believe that was the one that was open.
Yeah, it was the permanent.
The permanent position, right?
The permanent position, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there's a vacancy there, so that's a, it, so that, we have that. Deborah, would you record that? Okay, great, all right, it's, all right, beautiful. Deborah says the letter was made out for that already, so good, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, so on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I would like to make a motion with respect to item number six, the Brock, uh, Brockton Area Transit.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's right, too, we didn't vote that.
I move that we appoint, uh, Joseph McChrisky to represent the town of Stoughton, at the, with the, uh, Brockton Area Transit Authority.
Second.
As motion made and seconded, any questions? Mr. Gito? Ms. Roberts?
No question.
Mr. Carrara?
None.
Mr. Kaby?
Nope.
Right, on the motion, Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito? And the Chair votes yes. And, uh, Deborah, I'm sorry, I, I usually don't, I forget, would you record me as yes in favor of the, uh, the volunteer positions we just had as well? Thank you. Okay, so with that, on the consent agenda, the items is to approve the bill warrants and the documents to come before the board, to approve the schedule for maximum usable life equipment from Villero on various town departments for borrowing purposes, uh, the permit application, and, uh, there's Matt sitting out there from Recreation Department, Matt is doing an awesome job for us. And, uh, that is for Stoughton Day to be held September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, at Halloran Park from eleven AM to three PM. Uh, there's also a one, one-day all-alcoholic license application, uh, that was in, and is for four fifty-eight Page Street, uh, to be held on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, from twelve to five PM, uh, from Pages, and that is in a, a sampling event, uh, that vendors will be coming in. The request by the Council on Aging to set up a donation account for the Council on Aging in the name of Gladys Berkowitz Sock Donations, which, uh, if you know, uh, Ms. Berkowitz was, um, was knitting socks and hats and gloves for some less fortunate, and, um, doing that on her own, but people wanted to donate and they couldn't. So this will help, uh, some needed money come in and keep her knitting and crocheting for the next couple of years. Then we have the one-day beer and wine application, uh, for the Beer Garden to be held at two Canton Street at Trackside Plaza for eight twenty-eight, nine eighteen, ten sixteen, and that will be from two o'clock to eight PM. McGregor Morgan, who was here, um, you know, and I, I did tell him I wasn't sure how long they were gonna be, but asked him to go home, uh, you know, it, uh, everything's in order. And then we have, um, the one that I, I wanted to, as well, is the vote to reconsider reopening negotiations with the U.S. Post Office. And with that one, I'm gonna take the Chair's prerogative to ask Mr. Gito, if you would, um, like to just give your thoughts. This is, this vote would be that we will put this on the next agenda, unless for God's some reason, we can't do it, but I would, my goal would have this on the next agenda, if the board voted to, uh, to put it on the agenda. So Mr. Gito, I'll give you that opportunity just to address the board.
Well, uh, uh, i- if it's going to be on the next agenda, then let me not.
Well, no, this is a vote to whether we wanna put it on the agenda. If, nothing goes on the agenda, we, you know, that, this is the, you know, if the board wants it on the agenda, that's what this, this vote will decide.
Um, I'm, I'm sorry for, for my delay here.
No, no.
I, my mind was that it was not going to be talked about tonight. So let me, let me just mention it. The, the board had been, uh, working with the, uh, Post Office for about three years to acquire the Post Office property. And the reason that that was going on was that it was part of the master plan approved by the town in the town meeting, uh, several years ago. And my sense was that, uh, when, when the Post Office said, "We don't want to keep going on this," it was right at the end of the Trump administration, and they were closing the books, I think, on, uh, on projects that weren't moving ahead. And all I'm hoping to do is to, um, give us the chance to, to continue with that negotiation, basically hoping to, uh, to have a better way of, uh, of approaching the Post Office on the, on the issue. And I, I sent something out to all the members, basically laying out a strategy to do that. And I think it's a strategy that, uh, that may have some opportunity for success. And, uh, so I'm just hoping that we would at least allow ourselves to, uh, to go ahead and, and hope.
Okay. Okay, um, I guess, well, just, uh, does anyone wanna, is there any other comments? Anybody who have a comment, Mr. Kaby?
No, I have no comments. Oh, actually, I, I really shouldn't, I shouldn't, I do have a comment. Uh, but my, my comment is that, on, on the one hand, I, I feel like the, uh, and I've expressed this to just about anybody publicly who, who I've spoken with, I do feel that to a large extent, the, the Post Office has slammed the door in our face. And so I, I, uh, my first instinct is to think that, that the conversation, there is no conversation to be had. I feel it was clearly communicated. But, uh, but I'm also, uh, open to the idea that there's a solution to this that I haven't considered. And so I'm open, honestly, to, uh, hearing the thoughts of any member of this board who has, uh, you know, wants to be heard on, on, uh, on something like this. At the same time, I just, I do wanna just, uh, be clear that, uh, uh, that I'm very uncertain as to whether or not this will really bear any fruit. I would like to hear more, uh, read through your, your proposal, and I'm, I'm open to being persuaded that I'm, I'm sort of miscalculating this.
Scott?
I know the master plan was voted by town meeting, but sometimes in life, you can't get all that, what you want. There are more important things I can think of right now that have to be done than trying to suffice the master plan, which, there's no timing for it. The Post Office has walked away, and if we have to revisit it, revisit it at another time. I don't think this is the time to do it. We got a fire station that, that needs to be looked at, and there's, there's other things on, on the, on the front. I, I can't see sinking time and effort into a, an empty, another empty promise or whatever. It's just, I, I don't, I'm not in favor of this, I'm sorry.
Ms. Roberts?
I believe that we should table it until another time, maybe during the time that we talk about the master plan, because we do have a list of capital projects that we will be discussing. Also, I was reminded, um, as, as I looked at the proposal, that the Post Office slammed the door in our face. We wanted to, uh, continue con- conversations with them and negotiating with them. They told us no. And we went back to them again and asked them to reconsider, and they told us no. So I think that since the players, uh, I call them players, but the, the negotiators or the lead at the, at the Post Office are still at the head, and those are still the ones we would be talking with, that they have not changed their mind. But I would be open to talking about it at a later time. This agenda item, vote to reconsider reopening negotiation.
So this was a vote intended to see if the board wanted to take it up. Uh, I will say that I don't support it, uh, and I will echo Ms. Roberts' words is that we were making good faith attempts to work with the Post Office, although I thought it was extremely way out of line, what we were talking about for what the town should, should be putting up. I think it was just highway robbery, uh, and that was my opinion on it. But, um, the board did vote to dissolve the actions, it was a formal vote, actually, after Ms. Roberts is right, we, the door slammed in our face. If something new comes up that, you know, that wasn't there before, and all of a sudden there's a, a better deal for us, we could, I, I would say that would be the time. But, um, that's just my, my two cents as well, so. So what I will do then, uh, where the boards have the opportunity to, uh, to talk about this, I'll call for a vote on, uh, on placing the issue of voting to reconsider opening negotiations to having it placed on the next agenda. Uh, so on that vote, Mr. Kaby?
Uh, aye.
Mr. Carrara?
No.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito, yes, and the Chair votes no. Okay, so that one, uh, I thought was duly, that we pulled that out of order. So on the rest of the consent agenda, is there a motion to be made?
Point of information, I just wanted to, to mention that item H has not been read, uh, which is just the open session minutes of July twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, all right, did I skip that, I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, I'm sorry if I did, okay, thank you.
But I move to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, and H.
Okay, motions been made, is there a second? Motion made and seconded?
Are we gonna pull anything out of the consent?
Well, you just had the chance to, what do you wanna do? What do you wanna pull? F is the one-day liquor license for the Beer Garden at, um, Trackside Plaza. I was talking like this before, how about now? Okay, okay. Yeah, it's multiple days.
You said one day, it's multiple days.
Mo- oh, I thought I said multiple one-day licenses, I'm sorry, uh, because I knew that's what they were, but I did list the dates here. Are you all set then?
Do you wanna know what my, my questions were?
Well, you stopped and told me something, and then you stayed quiet. So I'm asking you what you wanna talk about.
I wanna know how many police details are gonna be there, they, they never really nailed it down.
That was, uh, the Police Department head sent us a letter in the packet, I believe, and, uh, he was talking with, uh, when they get closer to the numbers of people, that we one, possibly two. And, uh, at, at the time, the deputy, and I thought there was a correspondence to that, the deputy had said he wants to be fair with them and not have two people there if there's not enough that requires it. So they were gonna look at and see how the attendance goes, but, um, Mr. McGregor would commit to two, if that was the directive of the deputy.
Then, then you have, um, Stoughton Fire had, um, worried about overcrowding, there was no way to know how many people were coming, and then in the- way to know how many people were coming, and then in the building inspector said, being outside, it would be nearly impossible for a crowd control manager to know that the head count is even...
Is my mic on?
My mic's on.
Yes, it is, Dolores.
Just get it closer. No, it's green. It just said that, being outside, it's from Jack Erickson, that the head count, even though they're calling it an occupancy of 200, they, they, it's impossible to know, so that's why I wanted to know how many. It's a little late to figure out how many details you need if, if there's not enough.
Well, that's why the commitment was made by the petitioner for it, with the deputy, that he would put suitable details in, and if it gets to be big where they can't control it, my understanding was, you know, they're going to, they're going to have to go back to square one, they're going to have to address the, the police department and the fire department, so right now, they don't know what it's going to be. That's, that's the thing, if we go and we say you need three, and then two people show up at this thing and it's a bomb, you know, there are a lot of money.
I, I, and if I might, I think there'll be a better sense, once they know exactly how many food trucks will agree to come, they couldn't really sign up vendors to come until they had the approvals, so once they know that, they'll know a little bit better. And, and don't forget, we also, if there's a crowd issue, we will also know what the guys on patrol will be prepared to deal with that as well.
Are other businesses in the square going to be involved in this?
Yes, yes, whatever they can, they're, they're asking for them to be involved as well, and Pam was here as well, the, and that was mine when I said they could take off, the, and they are looking at that, because I had concerns, they're going to make it available where sandwiches can be pre-made if, if another company wants.
Because the only, the only thing I was worried about when I saw this was you've got a struggling Portuguese national club.
Right.
And then you put on a, a thing like this, and it, and it, and it just deters their activity, so that's, that's the, my only concern about it, was we're trying to help the businesses, and, and then we put something like this on, and the others are going to suffer.
Right, and this one, like I said, it's going to be different, and, and I said that, town managers heard me say that, the petitioner heard me say it, Pam's heard me say it, and I think I mentioned it here as well, at another one that they rent, that I was concerned. And I did call some of the people as well at the clubs, and they were okay, they said, hey, if it gets big, we're going to have a problem there because of the parking, and that was their thing, so if it gets too big, it's going to be too expensive to run, because it's just not the site park, you know, and they're going to need more insurance, they're going to need more details, and it's going to be so.
That's the other thing, I, I didn't get any copies of insurance, were there?
There was, I believe, wasn't there an insurance, there was an insurance certificate in there?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Being held on town property also meant less of an insurance liability.
Well, it, it might be less on the town, but I'm, I'm wondering, did we get one from the guy who owns Trackside Plaza?
I believe.
I don't want to use his name, but.
Yeah, I, I believe so, but I'll.
And then the guy, the person who's running it, whose name's on the application, he has to put one up, too.
Yeah, I saw it, I saw it, so.
I didn't, I didn't see any, and I, and so that's why I'm just wanting to bring it to light, I didn't see them.
Yeah.
So if you, if you guys are, are right, and you, and you thought you saw them, then you thought you saw them, but I didn't see them.
I'll get it, I'll get it, I'll get it for you.
Thing, that confirmation, I, I do believe they were in there, but, yeah, no, I, I, we did discuss it, we discussed it with our own.
We're the ones who are going to be approving something, then puts the town on the hook if it wasn't there.
Yes.
I saw them, I know I saw them, so that's why I'm saying that, and, you know, I'll get them for you, that's, that's not a problem. Okay, anything else on the consent agenda? Okay, so I'll call for a vote on the consent agenda, Mr. Gito? Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
I vote no on this one.
Okay. Mr. Carrara is opposed to the one-day alcoholic license, the, the one-day, one-day multiples, the one-day beer and wine application for the dates of, okay, that's why I read it. So, so item F, Mr. Carrara is opposed to. Mr. Cavy?
I vote yes.
Okay, and the chair votes in favor, the consent agenda does pass, okay? So then we have executive session, and this is just for approving executive session minutes of 7:06:21, so I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of approving executive session minutes of 7:06:21.
So made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, on the motion, Mr. Cavy?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Thank you, we will be adjourning from executive session, and we will wait for everybody to leave the hall, and we will just sit here, and so thank you, Dolores, and a happy good evening to you.